Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the September 3 regular meeting.
Move approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for question.
The question's been called for for approval of the minutes of September 3, 2014. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, the next one is just for to put in there is the minutes of the Main Street meeting of August 18th to try to keep council informed of what's been going on in that part of it. So, we're still discussing what to do going through. And like I told at the last meeting, the next item on the agenda is the Sharon's resignation letter. And so, either tomorrow or the next day, Thursday or Friday, I'll get the paper and we'll publish probably for about a month asking for people to sign up or bring in to the city. And I won't, I mean, I'll open them up just to make sure that we can get, the main thing checking would just be, are they qualified for the position? And then by at that, the end of that, or we'll do it pretty much a month, what I want to do is get it in the packet for the second meeting of October for everybody. And I'll have all of the resumes or whatever you want to call them in the packet for the council to make a decision at that time. If that's acceptable, that's what I'd like to do. Okay? Okay. Under Mayor's report to the City Council, first item is Beaverhead County High School parade request, September 26.
I would move approval.
Been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for question.
Question's been called for on the, approving the Beaverhead County High School parade request for September 26. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance granting to Northwestern Corporation or Northwestern Energy a non-exclusive franchise and fixing the terms there under which said company might construct equipment, maintain, operate national natural gas delivery facilities in, under, upon, over, and across streets, avenues, alleys, highways, bridges, easements, and other public places in the city of Dillon, Montana, may deliver and sell natural gas. What that is, is we had an easement or not easement ordinance, 20, 30 years, 40 years?
What was it?
1964.
64, so.
64, yeah.
And that one just ran out in April. And I've had the city attorney working on that, just pretty much, they wanted an ordinance instead of an easement, because it was an ordinance last time, this just gives them an easement, quote-unquote, easement to do, to fix their natural gas lines that could be buried under the ground.
Move first reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion?
This will go in our ordinance books.
Yes, this like an ordinance, but it's funny, that's, I always assume ordinances or laws, it's there forever unless you repeal.
Yeah, signals.
And it did, but that's what all, everybody else in the Montana's doing with them too. Okay, because this does. Yes, Paul Babin is here for Northwest Energy, if anybody has questions too?
I would make myself available all day, I work for Northwestern Energy, I cover a few divisions, which includes Dillon, so if any council members or anybody asks a question, I'd be more than happy to answer it.
I had a question.
Okay.
Is there a sunset provision in this?
There is, there is a term where it will be, you know, every 10 years, we'll look at that. The ordinance that was in place was a 50-year ordinance, it's still in place until a new one would take its place. I want to thank the city attorney and the mayor for working with our attorneys to add some language. But it's something that, we had these ordinances across all of our service territory that were 50 years. A lot of people didn't even know there was such an ordinance out there. So, we're making sure that we go off the ones that date has expired. We've done it in Butte, Dillon, I don't know if that'll be, Butte, Anaconda, Lockerville, Phillipsburg. I'm working over in Twinbridge as Sharon, and now Dillon. So, there is a time period in that.
And there was also added to this ordinance that if they do dig up like streets or something, they put it back to the condition they were in.
We want to make sure that we do the same, we want to operate the same way that we've always operated. Where you know what the work that we're doing, that whatever we deserve, we put it back, either as good or better than we found it. In the immediate committee processes, this doesn't supersede any of those. Also, the mayor did mention it's a non-exclusive, so that doesn't mean that we're, you know, asking to be the only, the only entity down there.
Any other questions?
I do have one.
Okay, yes.
When the council passes it on the second reading and then it's 30 days until it's basically in, I think at that point in time, we need to send an original copy to the clerk and recorders and have it filed. She has a file there for the city of Dillon, it's much easier to find things like this that happen to get, you know, put in a file somewhere here. It's easier to find at the courthouse than at that one. So, I would suggest that after the 30 days, we take it there and get it filed. So, it's more of a public record. And I can do that, it's just.
Just inform me.
Just kind of informing of it, that's a good way to protect the public record.
And as the community relations manager, as we work, you know, if there are any projects that are going on, if you have any questions, you know, please work through me, and we'll make sure that we get answers for you. So, with that, thank you for your concern.
Oh, just real quick, I guess this is a great opportunity, Paul, I appreciate you being here. As fire chief, we've always brought up that concern here of late with Northwest Energy of weekends and night times and on-call people, of a power line going down or even a gas line going down. Amount of time it takes, a lot of time to get a Northwest Energy person on scene. We've sent letters, I just want you to hear also that, you know, we're all volunteer department, if a power line falls down, all basically we can do is stay on scene until somebody shows up. And it's been frustrating for us to have to wait an hour, hour and a half, somebody come out of Deer Lodge, Whitehall, or wherever they may be to deal with, and, because the ones in Dillon are off scene that time, so. But in the, in public safety concern, that is, when it does happen, it is a big concern, so.
So, we'll make sure that I bring that.
I don't know that we keep squealing about that.
That's right.
All right, thank you, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your consideration. Thank you.
Call for a question.
Okay, the question's been called for on the first reading of the ordinance granting to Northwestern Energy a non-exclusive franchise. And to sell natural gas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. It'll be on the agenda next meeting, the second reading. Next one is the easement agreement and grant of easement between Southwestern Montana YMCA and the city of Dillon.
Move to grant the easement between Southwestern Montana YMCA and the city of Dillon.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Did somebody want to, or Jason want to?
I don't know. Maybe you have a plan?
Or maybe the city attorney? There was concerns before on really who is going to fix the ground, or fix our nut ground, you know, the pathway and that, and the city attorney looked into it and worked with Max Hansen and, yes?
I did a visit with Max Hansen about it, and the, I think I got sent a letter over to him. And we sort of ping pong back and forth and got, I think, an agreement that I think protects the city, but also allows, I think, the recreation aspect of the project to go forward.
Yes. I think this is a great easement between the city and the Y. I would think that we would need to entertain an MOU of some sort with the Beaverhead Trails folks. That's kind of the step number two. So, we have that, so we know what our responsibilities are. And we'll get to that at some point in time. I think that would be kind of step two, now that we have this easement or will have this easement.
Any other questions?
Question's been called for for a proven de-easement agreement, the granted easement between Southwestern Montana YMCA and the city of Dillon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Uh, let's see, the next item is the city of Dillon substance abuse policy. What that is, was, has to do with the bus, that's with transit. And it's a part of the M.D.O.T. grant that allows anybody to ride the bus. They have a substance abuse policy that we were supposed to have voted on, that none of us knew until now, when, back in like February, I think, or January. And we found in the records that this was supposed to have been voted on too at that time. So, that's why it's in here now, it seems to be kind of late, but. There is one that we've talked about that we want and we will change, is on the first page, number one, if it's acceptable to everybody to do, is where it says underneath, we're under the bold face right at the top, where it says city of Dillon substance abuse policy, we'll put city of Dillon's bus, or, so we know it's not everybody in the city of Dillon, just people related to the bus. If that's acceptable to the council to do that. And so, we know that it's for bus or anybody related to the bus. It does say it in the document, we wanted to make it clear that it's just the bus.
I would move approval of the policy with the addition of bus on the table.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion? Other questions? Question's been called for on accepting the city of Dillon substance abuse policy with the addition of adding bus at the top of the page one of, by the city of Dillon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next one is, after the last meeting, we said that the city attorney and myself would put together a resolution for anybody to look at, this is just something we put together. People have, feel free to, it won't hurt our feelings, of changing any of it, okay?
I'm going to move to table to send back to the, to the city attorney and maybe work with the judiciary committee to revise it, because this was not really the intent of what we wanted to do, so I'd like to.
Okay.
For revision.
The motion is to send it to the judicial with the help from the city attorney.
Yeah, we'll sit down and get it worked out.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for a question.
Question's been called for, sending the resolution to the judicial committee working with the city attorney to revise it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it will be gone. Okay, now the long list of budget items. First resolution is adopting the 2014-15 fiscal year budget of the city of Dillon and levying taxes to provide revenue for that budget, allocating those funds to various budget categories and city activities. Second. Been moved and seconded, discussion? This is mainly to accept the budget, is what this part adds, to get everything ready to levy the taxes, which will come next, that's the rest of them.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to accept the resolution adopting the 2014-15 fiscal year budget for the city of Dillon, levying taxes, providing revenue for that budget, allocating those funds to various budget categories and city activities. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Next item is resolution to the city council levying assessment upon all taxable properties for the purpose of paying principal and interest on a general obligation bond approved by the voters.
Move to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? This is that general obligation bond that we talked about earlier in the hearing for the police retirement.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to accept the resolution of city council of the city of Dillon levying assessment upon all taxable property in the city of Dillon for the purpose of paying principal and interest on the general obligation bond approved by the voters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a resolution, city council, city of Dillon adopting fiscal year 2014-15 the city budget for the Dillon Sid 30, number 33, paving of the city of Dillon and levying assessments therefore.
Hope to approve Sid 33.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for question.
Question's been called for to accept the resolution, city council, city of Dillon adopting the fiscal year 2014-15 city budgets for Sid 33 and levying assessments therefore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next one on the agenda is resolution, city of Dillon doing the fiscal year 2014 for Sid 34. We'll cut it down.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to accept the resolution for Sid 34 assessing and assessing the lev, levying assessments therefore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Next item is resolution, I know there's a lot of them, isn't there, everywhere? Resolution, the city council, city of Dillon adopting the fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for the Sid 35 parking, that's the school parking lot of the city of Dillon and levying assessments therefore.
Move to approve Sid 35.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to approve the resolution of city of Dillon adopting fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for Sid 35 and levying assessments therefore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next one, another resolution of the city council, the city of Dillon adopting fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for Sid number 36, which is the sidewalks on Montana Street, and levying assessment therefore.
Hope to approve Sid 36.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for question.
Question's been called for to accept the resolution, city council, city of Dillon adopting for fiscal year 2014-15 Sid number 36 and levying assessments therefore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next one is a resolution, city council, city of Dillon adopting fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for Sid number 37, Cotton Street, and levying assessments therefore.
Hope to approve 37.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for question.
Question's been called for to accept the resolution of city council, city of Dillon adopting fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for Dillon Sid number 37, the Cotton Drive improvements and levying assessments therefore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next one, another resolution. Resolution of city council, the city of Dillon adopting fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for the lighting district number 33 of the city of Dillon, levying assessments therefore.
Move to approve Sid, or lighting district 33.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
I have, I'll bring it up this time, because I think it really applies to lighting and street maintenance and sprinkling. But in particular, on street maintenance, I think the resolution should include $1.85 per linear foot, because the bulk amount, if, when we're not around and people look back, it's going to be unclear to them what the dollar amount was. We had confusion this year. And I think it applies also to sprinkling and lighting, which is, you know, very tiny, but just to be consistent.
Okay, for the lighting one, I'm trying to remember, 72, no. What was, how many cents per linear foot?
That was 52.
52, I think it is 52 cents, but we'll check.
Yeah.
We'll put it under there, now therefore be resolved that under number one at the end, and assess whatever the correct number, I think it's 52, but whatever the correct number is, it's not being changed from last year, per linear foot there, if that's acceptable.
Right.
Maybe have a motion to amend it or just want to take it as is?
Take it as is.
Okay. It'll be in the record and I'll change if you so vote.
Call for a question.
Question's been called for to accept the resolution as changed by adding on to the lighting the correct number per linear foot assessment under number one of the adopting the fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for lighting district number three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous with the correction. Make sure I don't forget to do that. Uh, next item is the resolution, city council of the city of Dillon adopting fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for the street maintenance number one of the city of Dillon, levying assessments therefore, with the, oh.
$1.85.
With $1.85 added in the same spot under number one, is there a motion?
Move to approve, uh, street maintenance district number one.
As, okay, and it's been seconded, discussion?
Second.
Call for a question.
Okay, the question's been called for to accept the resolution of the city council with the addition under number one of putting $1.85 per linear foot to that and adopting the fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for the Dillon Street Maintenance District number one and levying assessments therefore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous with the correction or addition there. Next one is the resolution, the city council, city of Dillon adopting fiscal year 2014-15 city budget for Dillon Sprinkling District number one and levying assessments therefore.
Move to approve Sprinkling District one.
Second.
With the adapt, with the change as addition with number one, with the linear foot on to it. But it's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for a question.
Question's been called for to accept the resolution of city council, city of Dillon with the addition of adding under number one to add the linear footage cost and adopting a fiscal year 2014 budget for the Dillon Sprinkling District number one for the city of Dillon and levying assessments therefore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Almost have to take a break. I'm trying to do that, because really it's probably a way, a conference moving order, state reacting to what everybody's voting on and the time you vote, so there's no confusion, so. Okay, next item on the agenda is August 2014 revenue report.
Move approval?
Been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for a question.
Question's been called for, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is a citizen's request for your, it'll take a minute or two to let you look over the requests. See if there's any questions, we're here to answer, please. They had a sign, I think it was Labor Day, wasn't it? People having fun during Labor Day, ran over a sign. Any que, any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, next one, reports of officers, reports of the city, first, city attorney, Mr. Dolan.
Um, I wanted to take a brief moment, I have had some calls from some citizens that are interested in the city judge position, but I just wanted to take a moment to reiterate that the code requires that the person who may be a candidate for city judge must reside within the city. I'm sure you all know that, the public may not know that. The vacancy will have to be appointed by a majority vote of the council. The mayor doesn't participate in that decision. So, I just want to remind everybody in this body of that. The resignation, I think, is effective the 31st of October. And I think you must appoint that person within 30 days of the date that it has actually become vacant. I think in terms of planning, would probably be a good idea to try and work on that. I don't know if you want to farm that out to judiciary or whatever you'd like to do, but.
Well, here's what, if you could, here's what the judge was sort of wanting to do, or, so it'd be a smooth transition, is you guys would decide on whoever. We still will not swear that person in, because it needs to be voted on and a swearing in. We would not swear him in in there, because at that point, there'd be two judges. And so, and the resignation hasn't really taken effect until. But she wanted to work with whoever gets appointed and sort of train them, because there'd be, going in really fast, they would have to go get judge training, which is like a week or a couple weeks into November, to have judge training, which is required, you know, by the Supreme Court. And so, if possible, she would like to have them for a week or two, to sort of show them, you know, not having any official power, but show them what's going on, so they have a more smoother transition. That's why I'd like to get it, the vote happening like the second meeting in October, but not swear him in until after the official resignation goes through. Which I believe is okay, isn't it?
If in regards to the residency requirement, couldn't that be part of the solicitation announcement?
Oh, well, yeah, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see any problem that the council couldn't decide on the second meeting in October. That gives them basically, what, two weeks to get them up?
Yes.
To deliver themselves with the office or whatever.
Other than that, I don't have any further to add. Any questions for him?
I guess I would question whether the council or committee would want to interview the, would be candidates rather than coming here with forward applications and just vote on them.
That would, I, that is up to the council, that could be done too. We can call a special meeting of just interviewing and voting on, or interviewing, voting on, or just interviewing and voting at the regular meeting.
Or if you want to down an existing committee or create a committee?
You can do that too, I think that's what Billings did when their Justice of the Districts retired.
And then the community could have them and then put a recommendation to the City Council, and then the City Council can vote on it at that night. I'm open, any of that's fine with me?
I think, my feeling is that I think we all should be involved in the process picking a judge, um, you know, so I, I guess I'm saying the table as a whole, instead of having one little committee or something.
And the statute suggests that, David, so I agree with you, yeah.
You know, I, I didn't have any problem with the way it was done the last time, I mean, I, what I would like, instead of doing it during the council meeting, is maybe have an hour, half hour set aside before the meeting, to do the interviews or whatever, depending on the apps, and do that, then we can make our decision in the council meeting later on.
So it'd be kinda like a hearing or?
Yeah, you'd have to, yeah, if you, yeah, I don't, yeah, you know, you'd have to like notice up a special meeting to interview candidates for the, yeah.
I'm assuming you all, all get copies of the applications, so.
Oh, right, right, right.
You know, they can go out beforehand, before, like, the pack.
So you'd wanna maybe starting at like six or six-thirty or?
What's with the applications?
Well, I should have to see how many we get, and then we'll make a decision like a week or two before, I mean, we've gotten so far.
I think you should have something in the process to interview references, et cetera, too.
Very true.
Now, I could, or, like, references, you check the references, you'd want me to do that, or?
Somebody better.
Also, well, or also do a, wanna do criminal background, you want? I would hope. Probably wouldn't be good to put a felony.
I think, I think folks, I mean, really, you've gotta get a list of candidates, and then you've gotta get some resumes, and then you've gotta decide, okay, I mean, I'm sure there may be people that apply that don't realize, you know, what, what they, that they can't be a convicted felon and all that, you know, so.
Okay, we'll go through that process, and then we'll hold it before for an interview, for the meeting, with everybody, whoever signed and makes it pass the background check, residency, or, uh, and also reference check. After that, then, that will be in the package, okay?
So, so the goal would be to, to vote on this in the second meeting in October, and we would need to plan back from that, so that all this can be completed, uh, before that move.
Yes.
Gotta move fast.
Yes, and we'll do it. Okay, any questions? Next one's planning board. Does Lynn wanna respond?
Well, we, we had a meeting, we put the minutes last night, so we'll be, um, in the next packet. Um, we've mostly just been working on getting organized and looking on the growth policy, that's our project now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, zoning commission?
We'll meet next week.
Next week, so, okay? Next Tuesday at seven, if I remember right. Uh, next item on the agenda is Director of Operations, Judge Turner.
Uh, at this point, I'd like to apologize, I did not get my zoning compliance certificates to Stacy in a timely manner, therefore they didn't get on here. Um, I do have one on, uh, Atlantic Street next to the Dillon Medical Clinic there, it's going to be a small commercial, uh, massage therapy building, uh, does meet the requirements, it is very small, but, uh, still meets the requirements in that zone. Uh, P2P has their, uh, zoning compliance certificate, everything's going well there. Um, as far as activities from the water sewer streets, I've been helping the street department, we've been doing some of our own chip seal down there by Wayland Tire, uh, it's kind of a experiment, I guess you would say, uh, we can't ever seem to come up with enough money to hire a contractor to come in and do a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollar chip seal. Um, one of our vendors out of Great Falls has bought this equipment, and, uh, we are renting this equipment for a nominal fee because we're buying our oil from him too, and so, I will get the dollar figures, um, including the labor, truck time, uh, rental fees, oil, things like that, and we'll talk about that at a street and alley meeting, so. We haven't been able to do any kind of pavement preservation for probably three or four years, because with the big companies in, they bring all this equipment, of course, they don't bring it for free, they charge you to bring it here, so you get a, a project, a lot of that project gets eaten up, a lot of the money there gets eaten up on mobilization, so, I'm pretty happy with the way it's working right now, we've got a few bugs in the system and stuff, but we've worked it out, and, and, I don't know, I think it's, uh, I think everybody will be pleased with the job that we've done, and, and I think the cost will be, uh, decent too, so. We gotta start saving some of these streets, or we're gonna totally lose them. I would like to share something else with the people here, uh, doesn't have a lot to do with my position, but, uh, today is Constitution Day, the Constitution was signed September seventeenth in seventeen eighty-seven, and, uh, the Constitution Day was brought about in two thousand and four by Senator Robert Byrd from West Virginia, and he created a holiday, uh, kinda through an appropriation bill, it's called Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. Uh, what this bill says is that all educational institutions and federal agencies that receive federal funds observe the anniversary of the signing of the U.S. Constitution on or around September seventeenth by providing some way for students to deepen their understanding of the Constitution, so I just thought I would share that with you, so today's Constitution Day.
Thank you.
And I didn't see it in the paper anymore. And it is Constitutional Week.
Thank you, any questions to Jazz? Okay? Next item is Police Chief, Paul Pratt.
I would present to the council the Officer Activity Report for the month of August two thousand and fourteen.
Move approval?
Moved seconded to approve, uh, second, discussion?
Call for the question?
Questions been called for to approve the Dillon Ops, Police Officer Activity Report for August two thousand and fourteen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous, any other?
I have nothing for it.
Any questions?
I got questions.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is, uh, Mr., uh, Police Chief, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, thank you, and your back in the, uh, August report, when we expanded your report, uh, I'd ask for your approval.
Move approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called for to accept the Fire Hall Report for August two thousand and fourteen expenditures, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Any other? I have nothing else, if there's any questions. Okay? Next item on the agenda is, uh, Judge Shay Erwin, she was late in getting the report, it'll be in next mon, uh, next week's, yeah, next, next month's even, uh, meeting, the first, the first meeting of the month, so. Uh, next item on the agenda is City Treasurer, Mr. Strauss.
Uh, included in your packet is the cash and bank reconciliation, and, uh, the summary of, uh, cash and investment accounts, and, uh, additional page shows a follow-up to last meeting's, uh, question about, uh, the collateralization of, uh, our large balances and financial institutions, kind of attached, uh, Stockman Banks, uh, uh, commitment of, of certain other bond, funds, bonds, uh, to collateralize our investors, almost seven million dollars in their account, and at the back of that is, uh, Wells Fargo's, uh, collateralization commitment letter, I did not get one from Pioneer Federal nor Commerce, uh, Bank, uh, this month, they do give it to quarterly, and I will provide that, uh, probably next month, uh, when they, uh, when they do give us, give me a quarterly update, so.
Looking for approval?
Move approval, any reports?
Been moved and seconded to approve the cash reconciliation, investment report, and collateral reports, discussion?
Call for the question?
Questions been called for to accept the cash reconciliation report, the investment report, and the collateral reports from Stockman and Wells Fargo, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any other, anything else, or any questions? Okay, we'll go on, thank you. Uh, library board, I didn't get the minutes, so, maybe we'll get them next time, if you get in there, so, and Dan's gone, so, we'll talk about that next meeting. Tree board? Uh, Mr. Turner?
Uh, before you, you have the minutes of the Dillon Tree Board meeting, August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, if you would like to approve those, that would be great.
So.
Move approval? Been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for the question?
Questions been called for to approve the minutes of the August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen of the Dillon Tree Board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
We did have a meeting, uh, Monday evening at seven, uh, it was kind of a planning meeting for what we're gonna do this next year, uh, there are several grants that we usually put in for that are due within the next couple months, so we will be sitting down and looking at some grant opportunities there. Uh, one of the things that we do wanna bring back, and that is bring back the cost shared program, where people can, um, if they plant these approved trees on the boulevard, um, that we will pay, I think, seventy-five dollars for the, the tree board. Uh, the tree board will also, uh, have the person that requests the planting, uh, they have to basically sign a paper that they will water those trees on a timely basis, and that they are, um, you know, responsible tree owners, I guess. Um, and then, uh, the tree board, uh, will plant those trees, uh, give them a pamphlet on proper, proper care, and we will also check up on those too. Uh, we have a couple other, uh, projects that we would like to work on, we wanna do some more work up at the cemetery on planting trees, and maybe even putting in a drip system, uh, for the trees that we plant up at the cemetery. That's such a harsh environment up there, um, water is real limited at certain times of the year, so, uh, but it was, it was a good meeting, and I think we've recruited a new tree board member, and, uh, hopefully she puts him her, her ladder where she's, you know, where we can vote on her, so. Anything else on trees? A little note on the trees, uh, left the trees lose their leaves, kinda harden up, harden off a little bit, that means hold back, start holding back on the water, especially on the deciduous trees, um, on the, uh, spruce trees, pine trees, fir trees, keep pouring the water to them. The deciduous trees need to harden off before, uh, before frost, you know, before it gets real cold. Once they lose their leaves, that means that they're, they're done growing, so then go ahead and pour the water to them one more time before the ground freezes up.
Okay?
Any questions, comments?
Okay, we'll move on. Reports of standing committees of the City Council Judiciary Committee, Ms. Wested.
In your packet are the judiciary meeting minutes from the last meeting, as you can see, we've been working on the application and policy of street closures, uh, as well as the old container, and we're ready, and still will be working through that in several meetings.
Move approval?
Second. Been moved seconded through the minutes, discussion?
Call for the question?
Questions been called for to approve the minutes of the Judiciary Committee of the September tenth meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay? Anything else? Okay, uh, next one, Finance Committee, I apologize, probably should have had this up, but.
No, no.
If you, if the council so votes, we can remove it from the budget, if that's so wanted, but.
Okay, before you, you have the, uh, Finance Committee meeting of September eleventh, I had moved approval?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, approve the minutes, discussion?
Call for the question?
Questions been called for to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee of the September eleventh meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, in the, uh, minutes you'll see that we approved two claims for John Mannion, which came in late, um, we looked over them and everything seemed in order, so we went ahead and had them paid, and then we had a recommendation from the Health and Fire Order Committee to, uh, set up a line item, and also, uh, set aside two thousand dollars for the state duner clinic in this year's budget, the committee went ahead and did that, and it passed, uh, three to one, and basically, the, the last part was we, uh, adopted the budget as presented, so. Any questions, any comments?
Okay, we'll move on. Next items, Health, Fire, and Order, Mr. Schaefer.
Well, my meeting was, uh, just to take the two thousand minutes for the health dener, and we moved it to Finance Committee for this year's two thousand dollars to help him get a clinic by the third weekend of October. And then try to give it in line.
Okay?
Was there minutes to that, or?
Well, it's taken.
Yeah, but they're not in there.
It is, it was two.
I know. Well, next meeting we'll have them in there for approval, because I wanted to read them, which I, we just, it was a busy time getting this ready with all the stuff, so. Next meeting we'll have them in for approval, okay? Sorry, Bill. Cemetery parks?
Go for it.
Street and alley, Mr. Archer?
Uh, no reporting.
And then water and sewer, Mr. Cotton?
I'd like to add my revenue report for August three thousand, if that's approved.
Move approval?
Second.
Been moved seconded, discussion?
Call for the question?
Questions been called for to approve the revenue report for the Water and Sewer Department for August two thousand and fourteen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay? Okay? Uh, last item is public comment on items of significant public interest not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city. Excuse me.
I have a question, July seventh, seven oh four, South of the City, Pacific, and, and all of this budget talk, I'm asking exactly what is a mill worth in the City of Dillon?
I'll tell you exactly in a second. Four thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
My God.
So four eight four six point six five.
Thank you.
Are there any adjustments on the mill that brings it down?
Adjustments on the mill?
Let me ask you the question, I'm sorry, identify yourself.
Can you stand up and identify?
Scott Brown.
Address, sir? Your residence?
Dillon.
Street address?
Two thirty-four in Armby, Idaho.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I thought there was a reduction in, uh, on that yield.
Re, oh, from past year? It went down slightly from last year, if that's what you're asking for reduction?
Oh, no, no, I just thought it went down. I'm, I must be mistaken.
Yeah, I'm not really sure...
I thought it was four thousand seven hundred and...
That was two years ago, or three, it was that much. Last year was four thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and six cents, and so it went down, kind of what, eight cents? Or eight dollars, I mean, eight dollars, sorry, eight...
Where'd that eight cents go?
How, what, the, how the term determine the mills is, the state comes through and assesses all the property in the city, and determines what the taxable value of the city is, and then you, once they give you that value, you divide that by a thousand, and that's your mill, and the same way goes with the county. The state comes down, Department of Revenue, I think, comes down and determines the taxable value worth of the, of the county too, and then you get that value and divide that by a thousand, and that's what a mill's worth, so.
I stand corrected.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Uh, move for adjournment?
Second. Been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Any close?